Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
I need a motion to adjourn the executive session.
Okay, and a motion to adjourn the executive session.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. I need a motion to close the council hall.
(coughing) Excuse me.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the closed session, I just have to make a further announcement.
Oh, yes.
Of the closed session.
Mm-hmm.
Because we talked about some cases that were not spoken about originally. Okay, good.
Mm.
Okay. So, as I said before, we did go into closed session on the case of Magby versus Hackensack. We will anticipate that there may be a resolution relating to this matter on for the meeting of May 30th. In closed session, we did also talk about a number of ongoing litigations, including the Candela matter, the Ryoto matter, the Malvazia matter, and the Zisa matter. And so those were the extent of the legal matters that were discussed in closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Deb.
Okay. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and JSA 10: 4-6 at sec., notice of which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Everybody, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberatory, and just as one.
Thank you. Okay, need a motion to approve the minutes of the Cal and the regular meeting minutes for April 11, 2017. Is everybody here for that?
Councilwoman Keeling Gettis was opposite that day.
Okay, so I need a motion for that, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
I'm staying.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Now, I need a motion for the Cal and the regular minutes of April 24, 2017.
Everybody was present for that meeting.
Okay, need a motion?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, there's no proclamations or presentations tonight. We'll have the city manager's report, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and welcome invited guests. This is the city manager's report for May 16. Potholes. Outside contractor has completed their term with the city. They've assisted us to get the city in the best performance that we can as far as our streets. Our DPW will continue to address roadways in the coming months. We should see potholes. We still have a pothole hotline, which is 201-646-8058. Obviously, the filling of the potholes also brings the issue of street repaving and repairs. Obviously, we are combining the list and we will move forward, but certainly you can bring to our attention if you have streets that still have issues, and obviously there's some that just have section repairs that need to be made. I am aware that we have things that we need to address. I turned onto Union Street the other day and realized that there's a section of that needs some adjustment, but we are working towards it. In regards to addressing streets, Poplar Avenue paving update, we are now in the middle of replacing some curbing and some drainage there. They put the drop curbs in for ADA compliant. Then, once those are all completed, and they found that there were some more additional issues that needed to be addressed, because obviously, once we pave it, we're certainly not going to dig it up. That's the goal. We will be moving forward, but that should be done now that we have weather that's cooperating and the rain has stopped. We should be good. Number four, Hackensack shred event is scheduled for June 10, rain or shine. It's in the Sears parking lot. Flyers are available at City Hall, and information is also on our website. Lisa, our recycling coordinator, runs the event. Number five, twice-a-week garbage collection will begin on June 5. Tags will be distributed to residents the last two weeks of May. Routes 1 through 5 will be Monday and Thursday pickup days. Routes 6 through 10 will be Tuesdays and Fridays pickup days. Recycling will remain the same pickup day that the residents have during one-day pickup up as far as the schedule. Rubbish collection. Rubbish collection for the remainder of 2017. I've heard numerous complaints, and residents have spoken to me about the calendar. I was not the city manager at the time that the calendar was made or distributed, but as one person pointed out, I'm still responsible because I'm the city manager. So, we have made a new calendar for the balance of this year, and I'm going to write a brief letter and send out this calendar. The calendar is in English and Spanish. It'll go out to the residents, and this will be for the balance of the year. In January, I will make a new calendar, which will be laminated in plastic, so you can put it up on your refrigerator and know, and I'm going to phase out the calendar, because apparently, nobody reads a calendar or follows the process anyway. So, why have the expense of the calendar if no one's going to use it or value it? The city is attempting to provide more rubbish pickup for residents, but unfortunately, for some strange reason, I don't understand, residents do not either read or follow the direction that has been provided. So, my only solution to end this frustration for our DPW, the appearance of the city and council members, and for the city manager also, because my hair can't get much lighter, is to address this problem and provide education and a calendar for people to follow. So, the rubbish collection for the remainder of 2017, I'm looking into the flyer, will be distributed. It's color-coded. There's not much more I can do except drive to every resident's house and pull out their rubbish or what needs to be addressed. The schedule will follow the continued pickups, which is basically the old schedule that someone has reported to me, and it will be mailed out. My last issue is that I'm here tonight with Jim Magan, our CFO, and he's going to update you on the budget amendments for 2017. Jim, thank you.
Okay, just to remind everybody about the budget, it was on March 28th we introduced the budget. And that seems like a while ago, okay? But what is... The local budget law requires that at least 28 days lapse between the introduction and the public hearing. And tonight's meeting is actually the first meeting following 28 days. That's because the April 24 meeting, the date had to be changed because of a school board election. So, tonight, we'll have the public hearing on the budget, and then later on in the agenda, we'll be amending the budget. Since the budget's been introduced, two things have come up. One is we found out that for 2017, for our combined sewer overflow permit, the cost is going to be about $180,000, $180,000, which wasn't included in the original budget, so we need to add that. And we got in our annual payment from the Hackensack University Medical Center as part of the 2015 global settlement. And what we want to do with that money, which is $1.5 million, is we want to put that toward capital projects this year as an alternative to borrowing. The only way we can do that is to bring that into the budget. Okay? So, we'll have a new revenue coming in of $1.5 million. We'll have new expenditure for the additional, for the CSO permit, and as well as going to the capital improvement fund. In terms of the amendment, the tax levy stays exactly the same. The tax increase stays exactly the same, still 1.67% levy increase over last year, still a $64.72 increase for the average homeowner, because the revenue and the appropriations are equal. There's no change to the tax levy. Okay? That'll come up later on in the agenda, okay? But first, we have to have the public hearing on the introduced budget. Okay? That's the next step in the process. Following the amendment tonight, the amendment itself requires a public hearing. So, at the May 30 meeting, we'll have a public hearing on the budget amendment, and then we'll be able to adopt.
Thank you.
Do you need to open to the public?
So, we want to do the...
Just one last thing that I didn't include in my report. I just want to comment that one of the other things that the city manager has been working on is that we've gone back and reviewed all of the accidents that occurred, damage to the city's poles, signs, guardrails, and anything that were damaged, and basically went back to the insurance companies to reclaim the funds that the city has outlaid to restore this property. And unfortunately, when we have a sign or a street light or something knocked down to safety condition, we immediately take action to replace it. So, now, the city manager's office has filed, and we're now receiving checks that are going to the CFO. So, the money that we have incurred for this expense to fixes is coming back to us. But as Jim explained to me prior to my service, this has come up in conversation before, so I just wanted the folks to know, we are following up on it. The city manager and his staff are pursuing these, and so far, we've been pretty successful of reclaiming the funds that the city is owed. Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, we're going to open to the public. I need a motion to open to the public for the hearing on the budget. Have an offer. I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on the budget, and the budget only, please come forward. Seeing none, a motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. All right, thank you. We're going to move on to the rest of the docket.
Yes, Mayor, before we get to the docket, I just want to say that I have erred. There are four resolutions on there for employees.
Right.
That were not received rice notices. So respectfully, I would ask that the mayor and council pull, no, not pull them, table them till the 30th, so I can send the proper night rice notice to these employees to resolve this. Candidly, these employees know of this benefit, but just to make sure that we err on the side of caution, I would ask respectfully that they be pulled. Rice notice will be issued by the clerk, and we'll take care of that, and we'll be prepared for the 30th.
Do you have those four resolutions?
That's 149 through 152, it looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Do we do it in one...
Yeah, yeah, just a motion to table to the next meeting. And I just will add a comment that very recently, there was a court decision on rice notices that has made it so that, you know, situations in the past where rice notices may not have been considered necessary based upon this court decision, we're going to be erring on the side of caution to issue notices just for this or any other matter. You know, if there's any question at all that it involves a matter of personnel, just to protect us under this case that just came out in the last 60 days.
Okay. So, I need a motion to table Resolution 149, 150, 151, and 152.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 131-17.
This is a resolution for the adoption of ordinance 9-2017, an ordinance amending Part 2 entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 49.2 entitled Parking for the Handicapped. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay. May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pataglia. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pataglia. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 9-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 132-17.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 10-2017, an ordinance adopting 321 Main Street redevelopment plan consisting of block 407.01, lots 2, 5, 6.01, 6.02, 7, 34, 36.01, 36.02, 37, 39, and 40. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. This time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak, excuse me, on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt 132-17?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 10-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
All right, thank you. For Resolution 133-17, I'm conflicted out, so I'm going to lead the dais.
Deputy Mayor... You need to read it, Deb?
I need a motion to open. Oh, I'm sorry. Final adoption of ordinance number 11-2017, an ordinance to enter into a lease agreement with the Hackensack University Medical Center for certain air rights above Second Street for the construction of a modern surgical platform. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Can I have a motion to open to the public? Offer.
Second.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus recused himself.
If anyone from the public wishes to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
How much is the city of Hackensack going to make on giving the Hackensack University air rights over our street? And who is responsible? Any damage that those overhead walkways, if any part of it falls off, collapses and hits a motorist driving underneath it? Do they sue the city first because it's our street? Do they sue the building department second, and then do they go after the hospital third? I've never gotten an answer for any of those overheads, and I still have not gotten an answer on how much that new surgical wing is going to be taxed and how much more money because... The answer I got last time, it's their property. So, if I own a piece of property in town that has a vacant lot next to it that's part of my property, I could put a house on it and not worry about getting taxed because it's already there and it's my property. I assume they're going to pay 100% taxable, and the air rights over that should be a good hunk of money that should be going into the city coffers to offset the tax rate, unless I'm wrong.
I'll answer the financial part, and maybe you'll answer the legal part, if you may. Financially, Mr. Coley, the only thing here is the lease agreement for the air rights. Anything to do with the construction or the structure that's proposed to be being built is not on the docket tonight, and again, is subject to full planning board approval and negotiation. The only thing tonight in this ordinance that's up for discussion is the ability to lease air rights for them to construct this bridge. And if you read through the resolution, it defines what the terms of that will be. And those terms are that at the time that they will get approval for this project, so they will know the exact dimensions of that project, they will pay a million-dollar payment at that time, and the air right lease will be determined at fair market value of what square footage is currently making on a medical office, et cetera, multiplied by the number of square feet that they will be constructing, multiplied by the capitalization rate, which is what gives you a rent. And they will pay that rental agreement for 15 years with an increase of 2% a year, and at the end of 15 years, it's subject to negotiation. So, yes, there is, they will be paying money, lease money will be coming into the city for them to lease the air. That's all this is about. It's not approval of the building, it's not approval of anything other than that. As far as legal, I will defer to council.
Well, I think with respect to the liability issue, I mean, the answer is, of course, if something happens and somebody gets hurt, they're going to sue everybody that they possibly can sue. You know, we are going to be completing a formal lease agreement reflecting the terms in here, and, you know, one of the things that will be part of that will be, you know, sufficient protection for the city in terms of any issues that Hackensack University Medical Center is responsible for with respect to, you know, negligent construction, you know, anything along those lines. And obviously, as the deputy mayor said, you know, this is going to go through full review. There's going to be a construction office that's going to be making sure that this building is constructed according to code, and obviously, you know, Hackensack University Medical Center is, you know, a, you know, not a fly-by-night operation. They're putting some really, from what we've seen, you know, incredibly talented professionals into this. They have every incentive to build it right and to build it well, and I'm sure they will. But in the event that something happens, you know, we will ensure that the agreement has sufficient insurance and sufficient protections, that the city is protected as much as it possibly can be. But as you well know, you know, people can sue anybody for anything, and if something happens, we'll be sued, and the expectation is that, you know, that Hackensack Medical Center will be responsible for any problems that arise from their own issues. So, hopefully...
The other question I had on that is, who would be responsible? How often will they be responsible to inspect that overhead structure and make sure it is pertinent up to date? An outside contractor? Will the city be responsible, or will the hospital be responsible? Since it's going over city land, I would assume an outside contractor that has no allegiance to the hospital or the city, that if he finds deficiencies and it requires having that thing closed and shut down until it's repaired in behalf of the city, makes a lot of sense in my book.
I mean, you know, statutorily, you know, there is a construction office that the city of Hackensack has, and by the way, the construction office is regulated by the state of New Jersey. It's not, in terms of their inspection techniques, in terms of, you know, how they do it, and their issuances of permits and appeals and all that sort of thing, even though we pay the construction office, it is essentially an entity that is run through the state of New Jersey. So, you know, all this is set forth in various building codes that the construction official will be responsible for enforcing. You know, if there is an issue, you know, they're empowered to issue various notices to stop work, to vacate premises, whatever they find necessary to do in that circumstance. So, I would rely upon our construction office, you know, which has a lot of experience with large projects, to be able to manage it, and if they see any issues, I'm sure they'll deal with them and resolve them.
You know, again, that's subject to, again, full site plan approval, planning board approval, and the details of that agreement will be worked out at that time. Right now, this is just allowing the Medical Center to move forward with the design of this, knowing that the city will cooperate and participate with them in allowing them to lease this and the terms set forth in this agreement. That's all this is. Thank you.
Duly noted. I wrote it down. Thank you.
Rich Serbo, Spring Valley Ave., Hackensack. You know, I just want to bring up something general about this whole ordeal with the hospital and all the dealings, the taxes, the air rights deal, the previous one, and Mr. LaBrus leaving the dais is, it just doesn't make it okay that he goes and sits over there, okay? So, what I want to say is, I think there should be a little bit of an investigation. I'm not calling for a special prosecutor, let's say, but I think there should be an investigation about what's going on with the freaking hospital and this council, okay? It's a little too cozy. What's going on? I don't think the public knows the whole story, and like I said, Mr. LaBrus sort of making...
Excuse me, Mr. Serbo, this open discussion is only relative to the ordinance right now. You can have your discussion with this later.
Right, but this is relevant.
Right now, this is just to discuss...
It's relevant...
It's only relevant to discuss the lease agreement.
Okay.
The lease agreement is, again, being negotiated at fair market value.
Okay, okay.
So, there is nothing here that would leave, give any credibility to the statements that you are making.
All right.
If you have a question about how this agreement is being calculated...
All right.
Or what the terms of this agreement are, we can discuss that. If you're going to go off on a tangent...
No, no.
Other hospital things, please save that for the open public session.
I'll tangent, because there's just too much going on...
Mr. Serbo.
With this council and the Medical Center...
I think I've explained it very clearly as to what the terms and limitations of this...
And there needs to be an investigation. Absolutely.
That's it. That's it. Thank you.
And I think the city attorney might agree with me that, you know, there should be an investigation about what's going on.
I'm sorry. This is not the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment?
And I just want to add, you know, Mayor LaBrus has properly accused, recused himself in accordance with all his legal requirements, so I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance only? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus recused himself. Now, we need a motion.
Now, can I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus recused himself. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 11-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Resolution 134-17.
Excuse me, just for the record, Mayor LaBrus re-entered as mayor at 8:31.
Thank you. In case nobody noticed. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Resolution 134-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 12-2017, an ordinance amending Part 2 entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 49.2 entitled Parking for the Handicapped.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Keeling Gettis.
Aye.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 12-2017 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May 30th, 2017, at 8 o'clock PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 135-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 13-2017 and ordinance to amend Chapter 49 of the Code of the City of Hackensack entitled Alcoholic Beverages to make technical corrections and conform to previously adopted legislation of the City Council.
Have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 13-2017 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May 30th, 2017, at 8 o'clock PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 136-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 14-2017, a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack in the County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance for various improvements to the city-owned buildings and appropriating $250,000 and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the fund balance of the General Capital Fund of the City of Hackensack.
Thank you. Resolution 137-17.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
I know, it was a lot of reading, you thought I was done.
I'm like, I need a motion, please, for 136-17. My mistake.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 14-2017 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May 30th, 2017, at 8 o'clock PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Now, Resolution 137-17.
This is a resolution authorizing a refund for Hackensack Health Department.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Resolution 138-17.
This is a resolution authorizing the recreation refund.
Have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Resolution 139-17.
Resolution authorizing tax refund.
Have a motion.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Resolution 140-17.
Resolution authorizing the Reliance Insurance Group, LLC, to perform the services as health, prescription, dental, and supplemental insurance broker.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Resolution 141-17.
This is a resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services for the combined sewer overflow asset management plan, Phase 2.
Have a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Resolution 142-17.
This is a resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services for the 2017 Municipal Stormwater Program Audit, otherwise known as MS4 Audit.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. That was 142...
That was 142.
Three?
Two.
Resolution 143-17.
Say, resolution authorizing award of bid contract to Convandia Sustainable Solutions, LLC, for solid waste disposal.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Resolution 144-17.
This is a resolution authorizing award of bid contract to Two Brothers Contracting for the M&amp;M Recreation Center renovation project.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
No.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Resolution 145-17.
This is a resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services, 2017 CDBG Road Resurfacing Project.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Resolution 146-17.
The resolution authorizing the awarding of national co-op contract for purchase of two international garbage trucks with leach bodies for $448,607.08.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Resolution 148-17.
147.
I'm sorry, 147-17.
This is a resolution for an emergency temporary appropriation prior to the adoption of the budget per NJSA 40A:4-20.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Resolution 148-17.
It's a resolution authorizing an emergency contract pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-6 for demolition of unsafe structure located at 142-148 Main Street, Block 302, Lot 2.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Okay, we're tabling Resolution 149, 150, 151, 152, so Resolution 153-17.
This is a resolution to amend BY 2017 approved budget.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Payment of bills, Resolution 154-17.
It's a resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Have a motion to pay the bills, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Okay, we have a consent agenda which consists of Resolution 155-17 through 164-17. Is there anybody on the dais who has an issue with any of these, that needs anything pulled?
No.
No, we're all good. Go ahead.
Okay. The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any item requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. Resolution 155-17 through 164-17. 155-17 is a resolution recognizing Municipal Clerk Week. Resolution 156-17 is a resolution authorizing raffle licenses. Resolution 157-17 is a resolution authorizing the mayor as a signatory on Treatment Works Approval Permit for 18 East Camden Street. Resolution 158-17 is a resolution authorizing support of mayor and council for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Resolution 159-17 is a resolution authorizing membership in the National Joint Powers Alliance Purchasing Cooperative. Resolution 160-17 is a resolution authorizing release of a maintenance bond for Avalon Bay Communities. Resolution 161-17, a resolution authorizing release of a performance bond for 505 South River Street, which is the Wawa. Resolution 162-17, a resolution recognizing May 2017 as Older Americans Month. Resolution 163-17, a resolution recognizing May 2017 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And Resolution 164-17 is a resolution authorizing the adoption of shared service agreement with the County of Bergen for the sharing of county-owned emergency and non-emergency equipment. We need a motion.
Need a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. Okay. Real quickly, I just want to, the first resolution in our consent agenda tonight recognizes Municipal Clerk Week, and we have a wonderful clerk and a wonderful deputy clerk, and I'd just like to personally thank them, and why don't we give them a round of applause? They did a great job. He's actually the 7th through the 13th, but...
Yeah, I, I was a little slow on the uptake there, I missed it.
Who knows, who knows to you guys? You guys do a great job, and they do a lot of, a lot of things, you'd be surprised how much they do in a, in a day. So, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
And this time, I'd like a motion to open to the public.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Kealan Gettis.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye. This time, anybody who'd like to speak, please step forward, give your name and address to the city clerk, and you will have five minutes. Thank you.
You go.
My name is Delia Maruri, and I'm here because I need some help. My property, 286 Pasique Street, I haven't noticed from my mortgage, they, the city get up my taxes $4,000, you know, and this is very bad for us because, you know, we're retired, we cannot afford a discount. How come $4,000 coming up? You know, I bought the property in 2007 with $6,000 something, and I made some comparables for another houses in Pasique Street and all over, you know, bigger, more values, and taxes $7,000, $8,000. How come I, almost $11,000? I need, you know, please, somebody help me. I need a review because I cannot afford a discounted mortgage. No, more than, we have to pay now more than $2,300. We pay $800, that means almost more than $400 a month. We are retired, you know, I don't know how, it may be some mistake or something, but I need a review. That's why I'm here, to be here. Ma'am, have you spoken to our tax assessor? Not, not, not yet. Okay, I'm going to give you this pad, if you just write your information down, I will call you tomorrow, and I'll set up an appointment, and we'll, we'll sort through this. Yeah, I tried to talk to somebody, you know, a few times, but I haven't responded. Mr. Pataglia called me one time.
Yeah, Delia, I went to Delia.
The tax assessor, I called you time, I didn't get her, that's why I came today.
I went to Delia, what are the procedure? Like, she had to go and talk to the lady and the tax assessor, and the way she will give you all the information, and the way you have to go with that to the county building, you gotta pay like $25, and the way, they will send you a letter, and then they call like for a trial, and then you can say, what are the reasons, you know, you can ask, and then they will take care of the problem.
If you write this information, you'll hear from me. All right. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Here's my card, if you just write your information and a number where I can reach you, I'll call you.
She went to school with me 60 years ago. Went to school with me 60 years ago.
Your address, your telephone, your name, and I'll call you.
Right, Cesar? Used to be in the school 60 years ago. We used to see, yes, close to each other. 60 years ago. I am seven.
Yep, good. Thank you, ma'am. You'll hear from me.
Next, please.
Rich Serbo, Hackensack, Spring Valley Avenue, okay? Let's talk about the election, okay? Last Tuesday, let's talk about it all, okay? Now, first of all, I want to congratulate Mr. Sims. I think he came out on top with the most votes. And just recently, they inched Mr. LeBrosse ahead of him. I suggest you have a recount, Mr. Sims, because I think you're the mayor. And I think you ought to give the people's will, you know, fresh air. Let them at least have our mayor as the person who received the most votes. Also, you should be at least seated in the deputy mayor's spot. Where you were bumped from that in 2013. And they're gonna bump you again. You got far more votes than the deputy mayor. So, get a recount, Dave, because I think you're the mayor. If not, you would be the deputy mayor, okay? Thanks. Also, on Election Day, I just want the public to know that the antics by our mayor were deplorable at the Fairmount polling place, okay? I called the police on him twice. And the police had him move that vehicle. There was a vehicle parked with a video blaring that he wanted to park right outside the front of the polling place. He was gonna leave it there. And took out a tape measure and measured across the street to see if it was far enough away. The police decided you needed to move that. And it had to be moved. Now, the question is, as that was riding all around the city, Mr. Ehrenberg must have okayed that. I think he did. I'd like to ask him about it right now. Did he okay that? And was it an illegal vehicle that he okayed for you to use on Election Day? If he did, I think it's outrageous, okay? Playing by the rules is what it's all about, John, okay? And that's why I'm holding back congratulations here. Congratulations is in order for you guys because, you know, you won the election. But I'm gonna hold it back because congratulations kinda has something to do with honesty. And, you know, working properly and following the rules. I mean, you don't congratulate a team that doesn't follow the rules or play by the rules, okay? Also, Mr. Battaglia, the entire freaking day, and I can excuse my language, but I can use freaking if you don't mind, okay? But all day, he was parking that beat-up truck he had with your signs on it in front of every polling place in Hackensack. He was just pulling it there until someone told him to move it. And I tell you, that is the most outrageous... You know, what is this? I mean, it tells a lot about you. It does. It shows us who you really are. And I'm so disappointed in you. I've been disappointed in you. And now I'm totally disappointed in you as our mayor. And I told you on Election Day that, you know, it's things like this make us upset that you're our mayor. Now, Mr. Ehrenberg, will you answer the question about the possibly illegal vehicle that the mayor kinda, you know, used as a circus tool to sort of distract everyone on Election Day? He also had kids hired holding signs of the LeBrosse team out in the street on Grand Avenue distracting traffic. The police told him to stop it. His own police department had him stop it. Now, answer that question for me, sir.
Mr. Serbo, you are required to direct your questions to the chair of the meeting. At which time, the chair will advise whether or not to direct Mr. Ehrenberg to answer them.
Hopefully, Mr. Ehrenberg will answer the question about okaying that illegal vehicle just for the mayor on Election Day so he could disrupt the whole city with it. And, you know, break the rules, okay? Can we get that? Do you mind if we...
Your question is directed to the chair of the meeting.
He can answer you?
Yeah, okay, so...
So you ask your question to the chair of the meeting, through the chair. And then the chair will advise whether Mr. Ehrenberg should respond.
Well, look, I've lost respect for the chair. So I'm speaking sort of...
Well, regardless of how you feel, you do owe the chair that respect for the position that he holds. So you should direct your questions to the chair. That is the rules of procedure. That is absolutely part of Robert's rules.
Thank you so much, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for your advice, okay? But I'm so upset about these antics. It was just, it really showed a lot about what the heck is going on. And it's just too much dishonesty.
Mr. Serbo, your five minutes is up. But I will allow the city manager to answer your question.
All right, sir, thank you.
If you wish.
To answer your question, sir.
Can I stand there?
You can stand there.
Thank you so much.
It's just no, you're done talking.
I'm silenced.
No, your five minutes is up.
Okay, silenced, okay. Thank you, sir.
To answer your question, I signed, as the city manager, a waiver allowing music or sound to be programmed in the city. And it's not the only one I've signed.
Okay.
As far as the... That's it. I don't approve the vehicle. All I give is the waiver for the sound or music.
What about the video? What about that?
I don't have any control.
The traffic or just...
I have nothing to do with that, sir.
Okay. And wasn't there a conflict?
Rich, which part of your five minutes is up? Mr. Serbo. Mr. Serbo, your five minutes is up.
There wasn't a conflict?
Mr. Serbo. I will respond to some of this before we move on.
Okay, I wish you would.
Yes, I will. When that truck pulled up for the first time, it was the first time I ever saw the truck, okay? When it stopped across the street from Fairmount School, I went immediately to my car because I thought it was within 100 feet possibly. Mr. Serbo was carrying on like you wouldn't believe.
I have pictures of it.
Please, please.
It was embarrassing. It was.
What? Did I go to my car, get my tape measure? Yes. Did I measure it? Yes. Was it within 100 feet? Yes. Did I tell them to move? Yes. I did exactly what I was supposed to do. The truck was too close. We moved it. He moved 50 feet down the road. End of story. It was 100 feet from the door.
Was it...
What I'm really upset with is... He used an F-word tonight, but he was on a school sidewalk with windows open on a nice day using multiple, multiple curse words with the kids there to hear and totally out of control. And I was very, very disappointed with that. No, it's not a lie. It's not a lie. There were plenty of witnesses there sitting on the sidewalk.
It's in character for you to lie, John.
Okay. But as far as these trucks goes, these trucks are used in multiple elections around big cities. And yes, we did have two trucks going around the city. Next, please.
Yes, good evening. Kathleen Sow, Hackensack. Congratulations to the team. You worked very hard. I don't approve the way you worked. I guess money can buy an election. The other thing is, that fear factor was really unprofessional. I want to congratulate Ms. Debbie Geller on her professional campaign. I mean, it was done right. And it was done, you told us what you're gonna do. And it was no mudslinging or anything else. And I think that was very commendable of you and your team. So we're here. And another four years. You worked so hard to get here. And I just hope that you will do a better job than you have in the past because it's not about redevelopment. And hopefully, we will. Because we really have a city manager that can manage the city. We finally have somebody that's not a liability like the last four that you had that were all redevelopment people. And we have a lot to do with the city. A lot of money is being spent. And I only see only 250 for improvements for buildings that we have here. And then I see a lot of money being wasted for other stuff. And I really don't approve of that. I agreed with Mr. Solms the other last time. And he said that we should be doing more for our kids, like uniforms. And this price tag of this M&M building is obscene. I mean, you could build Madison Square Garden with this price. First of all, the plans were really ridiculous. All that glass in between. You can make this building for half the price. And we only need a gymnasium, Mr. Sims. We need a school. Everybody's in denial. We need a school. Whether it's your problem or their problem, it's gonna be the problem of the taxpayers. And we're gonna need a school. You'll have your gymnasium when we build a new school. And that's what we can do. Our mayor had said one time that... I said, "Use the schools and use the gym to play." And he said, "Oh, we have to pay to keep the janitor there at night." I'd rather pay to keep the janitor there at night for a gymnasium than to build this whole gymnasium. You still haven't addressed the parking. You still haven't addressed the pact that you're gonna rape the neighborhood. It's gonna be ridiculous. You can't really go there. If you want to build recreation center, we should sit down, get the people's input, and make a real, real recreation center where it's for everybody. This is just for basketball. As far as feeding the senior citizens, Mr. Mayor, we feed them twice a week. With this money, you could bring them for the rest of their lives to Stony Hill and give them the two free dinners that you give them. This is obscene, this waste of money here. So I think we should go back to the drawing board with this M&M building, this rec center, put it centrally located with parking. And then I'd like to ask our financial person, what's this gonna cost this to run? It's gonna, there might be cost override like the money pit with the, you should learn your lesson with the cultural arts center that we dumped so much money in it. What's it gonna cost every taxpayer per household to maintain this, to staff it? Nobody ever gave us those figures. This is just to build it. Then we have to do all of the above with everything else. So nobody gave us those numbers. This is a very high-priced item. And it's gonna really cost the taxpayers. It's gonna be a burden on all the taxpayers. Mr. Sims, I commend you for the years that you've done everything, serviced these kids without any money. And now this high-end ridiculous building, and it's only gonna be for basketball tournaments. We haven't addressed the parking. Nobody gave us the answer what we're gonna do about parking. Nobody's gonna do a difference that we're covering 100% of the land. There's no open space there. And it's not gonna do anything. We don't need the rest of this building. All we need is a gymnasium in a school building. So let's build a school that we need. And you'll get your additional gymnasium. And leave this neighborhood alone. It's not gonna work. It's not gonna happen there. And as far as the plan goes, they don't care how they waste their money. It's just, you can do this building with half the price. We don't need all that glass in the middle and all the other stuff that you have there. And to heat it and the cost of it, it's obscene. Thank you for the lights in the parking garage. Our parking lot has new lights. So when we go out tonight, we're not gonna be tripping on the pothole that's there. There's a pothole in the parking lot. So I commend you for that. I asked the question last time. I never got an answer. That wall that's still on Main Street where we had the fire two years ago, that fell over a year ago? I never got an answer. I sat down and we closed the meeting. So through the chair, can I ask the question to...
Absolutely.
Our city manager?
Yes.
The wall that has been, it's very compromised because it got very wet and it's been very windy.
Are you referring to 76 Main?
Yes, the corner.
We had a meeting with the developer and the owner of the property. That discussion went into the details of what are you gonna do and how you're gonna develop this. He has already received notice and for zoning violations, which has been held for 90 days. That 90 days gives him enough time, which he requested, for his final architectural and development plans for it. And he's supposed to be prepared to go by August 1st. If he doesn't, we reactivate the fines and penalties for it. And he's gonna be fined for this because obviously, this project was originally, this obviously BT before TED, occurred two years ago, April 26, 28, something like that.
April 26, yeah, that's about right.
So this is going on now two years. So originally, this was a temporary fix for six months. Six months became a year. A year became 18 months. And the rest, you know. So we have now had a meeting, defined the scope. He gets 90 days. He doesn't deliver. We invoke fines and penalties for the violations. And we commence.
Thank you.
It'll be done.
Okay, thank you. And my other question to be answered also from the...
Time is up, Mrs. ...
I don't get an answer even when I'm... I'm not gonna talk anymore. I just want an answer from our financial person as to how much this building is gonna cost to operate with staff and...
I can tell you this. We already have a staff at the rec building. And that staff will probably remain there. And that's in the beginning, that's all we need.
The building's three times the size.
You won't need a bigger staff for the building. Just maybe for the seniors.
Good evening. Carolyn Davis. First of all, I want to say I do have to congratulate you. But I am thoroughly disappointed in how this election was run. It was disappointing enough to watch the President of the United States become the president with mudslinging. And to have to see it in our own city council on a city level is really sad. I got very tired of every day receiving another campaign poster in my mailbox that was nothing but mudslinging. I truly believe if you have something to stand on, you stand on it. You don't have to knock anyone. It's terrible. But I say congratulations to Deborah Keeling Geddis because you kept it classy. And I thank you for that. You may not have won the election, but you won my approval. You won my respect. And I have to say that to you tonight.
Thank you.
When it comes to development in this community, I'm gonna bring this up at a later time, more importantly. But this is what my block looks like when it rains, when we have a downpour like we had last Friday. If we're gonna spend some money, we need to spend some money on the sewage system in this town. This is sewage that goes into people's houses and their cars. It's been happening too long. You talked about disease regime, but you've been in there four years. It has not been addressed at all. It doesn't matter what you build. If you can't get to it because of flooding, it makes no sense. I just want you, you're new here, city manager. I just want you to have a look at that.
Which street is this, ma'am?
This is Stanley Place. Stanley Place in Hackensack, River Street. A lot of the streets around here continue, continue, continue getting flooding. I have not heard in four years any addressing toward the flooding that goes on in the city. And people, every time it happens, their property gets damaged. Cars get damaged. My daughter's car got flooded. We had to buy a new water heater for our tenants. This, to me, is a priority, not the buildings. Thank you.
Next, please.
Hi. Grace Guardo, 368 The Wolf Place. And I am here as a concerned parent. And I would like to address Mayor LeBrosse.
Yes.
You ran your reelection campaign on lower taxes and honest government.
Mm-hmm.
And yet, you have Councilman Battaglia that sits on this council that has used his political position to coerce the Hackensack Recreation Department staff into altering city field permits for his own private soccer team. He has used his position on this council to deny Hackensack children use of the Johnson Park turf field. He has even gone so far as to call the police in hopes of having our program, the Hackensack Junior Soccer Association, removed from the turf field. As a Hackensack recreation program, the Hackensack Junior Soccer Association should have priority in regards to field scheduling. It's in the rules. Rule number three of the Hackensack Recreation Department regarding field permits is permits will not be granted for any time or use that will interfere with any recreation or school program. And yet, Councilman Battaglia used his position on this council to pressure the Recreation Department to reissue his field permit, which now his team, and his team is not a Hackensack program, use of half the turf field, which as a result forces Hackensack Junior Soccer Association teams to not have use of this field. Because, and I'm sure that this happened at the Recreation Department because the staff, being that they're city employees, they're afraid to lose their job because the way his intimidation tactics. In addition, Councilman Battaglia has deliberately disguised his private team as a Hackensack team by using our name. He has kept the name Hackensack Royals as part of his team to give the perception that he is part of Hackensack Junior Soccer Association. But he is not. It is my understanding that as Hackensack Junior Soccer Association, we serve the children of Hackensack. My understanding is Councilman Battaglia's team, they are not Hackensack children. They are not residents of Hackensack. So I would like, Councilman Battaglia, I'm asking you, to have Councilman Battaglia provide proof of residency for his players. And if his players are not residents of Hackensack, then I would like an explanation from you, Mayor LeBrosse, why he has been allowed to continually harass employees of the Rec Department to reissue field permits to benefit him and deny our kids, Hackensack kids. I saw your truck. And you had, you were with kids, basketball. Hackensack kids should be our priority. Not Tenefly, not Fort Lee, not Bergen Field, not wherever his kids are from. And he has now gotten the Rec Department to reissue him a field permit that allows him half of the turf. So now we're out half of the turf. So I would like an answer as to how you, after running your reelection campaign on honest government...
Right.
How you continue to allow him to do what he does?
This is the first I'm hearing of this. So what I will do is I will, and I agree with you 100%. And it was actually said before the Cal session that Hackensack kids have first access to our fields, right? That was actually spoke about earlier in the evening. And I agree with that 100%. I coached for 20 years in this town, three different sports. And the kids, to me, always come first. What I will ask to be done is through the city manager, I will ask for him to sit down with Councilman Battaglia and go over this. And if he has to question staff members, then he will have to do that. But we will get to the bottom of this. That's my promise to you.
Thank you.
It's the first I'm hearing of it.
And what do we do this Thursday evening when he comes with his reissued permit?
I'm going to ask at this meeting, probably take place, you have any time tomorrow, sir, to try and just sit with Mr. Battaglia and go over what's going on here, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will ring the phone if she was the lady that meant the...
All right, let's... Paul, how are you, sir?
Good evening. Paul Nichols. Congratulations, everyone. And Councilwoman Geddis, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
It's really appreciated. I have the new resource guide for you guys as well, what's going on in the county. And one of the things I wanted to talk about besides that it's, gotta say, May is Mental Health Month. And a lot of heroin stuff going on around the county, not only in Hackensack, but all over. And in my new guide that you can see, they rolled out a program called the Heart Program, Heroin Addiction Recovery Team Program. I would like to see Hackensack somehow get involved with that, even though the grant was for Paramus.
Is any of that in there, Paul?
The basics is in there. But you might want to contact the prosecutor, the beer. But there's several creative ways, I would think, that you could get involved. Because one of the great things about it is if someone, hypothetically, if someone has drugs on them. But, you know, when someone wants to recover from addiction, it's gotta be done right away. You can't wait till tomorrow. It'll be like, I don't really think I want to do that. So gotta be done right away. So on Wednesdays for the pilot program, they can go to Paramus Police Station, 9 to 5, with drugs on them. They'll turn them over and no charges. And they'll get them into recovery. So maybe Hackensack somehow can get involved with that. Sure. Some way. So I would suggest talking to the prosecutor. We had an overdose and we had a Narcan save recently.
Right.
Here in Hackensack.
Our guys are using a Narcan now, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I spoke to the county about that property over there, over by the, that you were gonna have the bus terminal and then...
Probation site.
It's still open, they said. They said, I can't remember the whole conversation. But they're doing something. But they said ultimately, you guys would be the beneficiary somehow. So I would keep persisting with that.
Well, we're gonna keep on it.
Do it. Because I think if we can get... But this last rainstorm, and I heard some other people talk about floods, I would, you know, I was waiting that last rainstorm to see how close it was gonna get to the new Justice Center. And it came pretty close to getting up to where it was that last time. So I'm hoping, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know how high they were thinking about doing it, but, you know, we gotta focus on the water level over there.
Well, the bottom level would have just been a bus depot. Everything else would have been elevated.
Yeah, we still don't want it to flood, though.
No, no. But there's actually a pumping station right on the corner there.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Anyone else, please?
Regina DePasqua, Parker Avenue. We use the calendar, so please don't get rid of the calendar, okay? We do use the calendar, okay?
I've been told by numerous people that nobody reads the calendar.
How did you find out? I told you, because I looked at the calendar. I told you that rubbish date had changed. Because I looked at the calendar. Okay? But nobody told people that it changed. That was the thing. But anyway, you're fixing it. I appreciate it. But we do use the calendar. Please don't get rid of it. My husband will have a panic attack, okay? He uses it. All right? You did the waiver for that truck. Can we do that during emergencies? Can we, no parking, whatever? Could we do that? That would be really, really a good thing. That truck was horrible. It was a nuisance, held up traffic. But Amos wanted to do that for years, so he must have been very happy to have that truck. He's always wanted to do the sound truck. I want to congratulate you, but this was the most negative, mudslinging, Chicken Little, fear mongering campaign in recent memory. It was horrible. And anybody that calls you or win a landslide is delusional because most people didn't vote, okay? Those that did vote, a lot did not vote for you, okay? So you gotta take that into consideration. There are a lot of people out there that didn't vote for you, whether they didn't vote at all or voted for somebody else, okay? You must, in the next four years, remember that. But you counted on the voter apathy, the fear factor, and the third party. And it worked in your favor. But not all of us bought into that. Not all of us were fooled. You know, the saying, you can fool all the people some of the time and some of the people all the time, but you can't fool all the people all the time. A lot of people were not fooled, okay? They didn't buy it. So please, you, next four years. Majority didn't buy it. But I'm glad I can say, don't blame me this time, okay? Because for four years, people were asking me. You know, we thought we were gonna get better, but we didn't. There was an article about the people that no longer support you. And it was rather inaccurate. Mr. Mayor, you didn't know me in 2009 for me to get on your slate, okay? And nobody, I never asked for a job and nobody ever offered me a job. So a job is not part of... It's, for me, it's principles. With me, it's about the city. With me, it's about what's right is right, okay? And if it's not right, I'll tell you it's not right. But, you know, all this stuff, the negative, the truck, you didn't care that, you know, at 5 o'clock, traffic is all backed up because of the truck. Didn't care what the residents were going through because you had to have this sound truck. But you proved the end, you feel the end justifies the means. So, you know, I wasn't fooled, but I hope people have woken up to that because that bothered a lot of people. And there were a lot of personal vendettas and pettiness going on. And I thank you, I was not part of it. Thank you, thank you. Most people weren't paying attention, though. And I have been paying attention. Because, you know, I pointed out to you how you gave away the free ambulance and you didn't even know it. I asked you if you were privatizing sanitation, and that's how that came out. Most people aren't paying attention, and you banked on that. And you also are making deals like, Dave, I don't know if you got the most votes, second most votes, but you're up there. And I hope they don't maneuver you out of it. Rumor is that they're gonna offer your Rec Department, the head of the Rec Department, which would be a backroom deal, which you would benefit from being elected, and that would be a big problem, okay? It would be a big problem. Because, you know, somebody's spouse got a raise, that's the benefit of being elected. You got the dome, you're getting the rec building. This was after the supposed coup, a backroom deal, because those things came out of nowhere and we weren't consulted on any of it. So, you know, I have been paying attention. But police commissioner is not an option for you this time. So I hope you stick to your guns and, you know, you get what rightfully, you know, or traditionally has been, and you don't get maneuvered out of it. But the legacy of this council so far has been bad decisions, the backroom deals, employee intimidation, which was just, you know, amazed that it took this long for somebody from soccer to speak up, but I give her a lot of credit for speaking up because we've all heard it. You guys never heard it? We've all heard it was happening. And wait till the dome is built. Wait till the dome is built. But thank you for me not being a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie LeBrus, Brook Street. I want to congratulate everybody. I know for a fact this was a hard election. I lived through it with my husband. And I sit here and I listen to some people, like Paul came up with very good things to talk to you about. But I listen to other people, and I sit here, and I know for a fact that they're lying about what they say or they're the ones with the personal agenda. Ms. Salvatore talked about how she doesn't want all this recreation stuff to grow, yet that was what you first ran on when you first started running. And thank you for following through with it. The kids in Hackensack deserve better than they have. You look at other towns, it's much better. As far as comments that I heard when I watched the council meeting, I don't want those kids coming to my neighborhood. Shame on her. Mr. Pasqua said she didn't know you in 2009. That's a lie. That is a lie. She marched with us in 2009. 2009. So for, to say to the newspaper, I did not know him in 2009, that's a lie. Shut up, Regina. I let you talk. Regina, I let you talk? I stayed quiet for a year. Whatever.
You lied.
Second thing, she also said that she never wanted a job. I know that is not true. Both her and Ms. Salvatore got upset when Debbie Keeling got put on your transition team the first time. And that's when everything started with them coming after you. Second of all, second of all, a lot of people said things as facts, but they're not facts. They're like, just their personal assumptions, and they said it's facts. And the other thing I want to say is about the three tickets. I've researched it. It's almost impossible to get 50% of the vote or higher when you have three tickets. So for the people that keep saying, most people didn't vote for you? You're right, they didn't. But it would almost be a impossibility. You won by so much more than you won the first time. The first time, we had to wait till the next day to find out if you really got in. This time, there was no question. And last of all, the people that want to talk about negativity, this council, minus Debbie, you were quiet. This council talked about one issue and one issue only. And that was the Zsa Factor. I am happy they did, because I was a victim of the Zsa Factor. I was a victim. The people went around saying they were not part of the Zsa ticket. They did not, they don't even like diseases. We got phone calls continually over that. People had to know the truth. So be it may, not one thing was said about any other candidates. There was no mudslinging at any candidates. One thing and one thing only was mentioned. Do you want the Zsa's to have power again? Bottom line. And if you think that was wrong, so be it. I'm grateful that that's what they did.
Thank you. Next, please.
James Irwin, 40, Jefferson Street, Hackensack. I'm sorry I'm late. I think I missed some stuff. Ted, how you doing?
Butcher.
Congratulations to the folks that won. And a job well done to everybody that ran. I come here tonight, the last meeting I was at, because I've been out and about and I miss some meetings. Last meeting I was at was before, when election season started. And one of the council members, after I had spoken, after some people had spoke, had said like, made a comment to the fact that like, what either I construed as what I was saying or as a whole, what people were saying was silly. And I took offense to that because I'm not a silly person. Election season brings out whatever it brings out. But if people voice concern about whatever their issue is to say that, what their feeling is or how they feel is silly, is wrong. I think that going forward, right? Because if people want to take claim responsibility for things that have happened under their auspices, then you have to take responsibility for everything. And me personally, I'm not asking anyone to take responsibility for things they're not responsible for. It would be a mischaracterization to say that the current council should take responsible responsibility for things that have happened under their tenure that are out of their control. I'm not asking the council to take responsibility for the buildings that are being developed because they're not responsible for that development, right? They could have been conduits and could have taken part in meetings. Similarly, you know, the current council is not responsible for the two residents that were, you know, that were shot by the police department under whatever circumstances that happened. So I think that, excuse me?
In the back, sorry.
Okay, so I think that going forward, people should, one, be responsible, be attentive to people's, to their constituents' concerns. I think that some of the things that happened in election time were done improperly and they shouldn't have been done. And I think that what happens, as people are elected, they have good intentions, right? And then what happens as they go forward, they start to sway to the left or to the right. People do it in life, people do it at their jobs. They get comfortable. You start coming five minutes late, start coming 10 minutes late. You know what you could do in your position. But I would ask that you be responsible in what you're doing. If someone's doing something that's not appropriate, you have to be attentive to it. If you're not attentive to it, then either you have your head in your sand or you don't know what's going on, or you don't want to know what's going on, right? I've been out of town, but there's something going on with the police department. There's something been going on with the police department for almost a dozen years now. Like, what's the climate in Hackensack? Are you responsible for that? You've been in position for over four years. Are you responsible for that, Deputy Mayor? Like, I mean, so if you're not responsible for that, then I think that you should become active in changing the climate in Hackensack. Because the climate in Hackensack is not right. Like, people are coming here arguing, yelling, tossing stuff at people. Like, this is not what I live in Hackensack for, right? So either you want to change it, you want to listen to what people are saying and take the personal and the personalities out of it. Because like, I don't want to come here and sit through what I walked in on for an hour or two because it's BS to me, right? That's not to exclude that people can come here and say whatever they want. That's not what I'm saying. You can have your own gripe, right? And people should come here and say whatever's on their mind, right? But there's a lot of BS going on in this town, and it's not right. And there's people that live here that don't really care and don't vote, right? But they should also be afforded the opportunity to have people in charge that are doing the right thing. And if people say you're not doing the right thing, then you can't dismiss it. So you got elected again, congratulations. Do the right thing. Because some people would say that you haven't been doing the right thing. And don't ever call me silly again, because I'm not silly. I'm a concerned citizen. And I have time to do other things and come here and to be called silly.
Have a good evening. Next, please. Seeing none, motion to close to the public. Oh, Mr. Coley.
I have two questions. Just Coley. In regards to the change on the insurance broker, what does that mean?
No, it's the same, same broker, reliance, same person.
But he's the one that gets the quotes and everything for the existing city insurance?
Yes.
Oh, and he's, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just a renewal.
Okay.
Yep.
And my next question was, we're gonna expend $6 million to renovate the existing M&M building? Or is that to build the new arena?
That's for all the construction from start to finish. Total, start to finish. Except for the additional parking we're getting. That'll be done through the parking utility.
Okay. That's a bad, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Oh, there was one more thing.
Yes.
Now, coming to these meetings at night, and I noticed it during the day, is there a reason why, and I'll ask an ex-chief, why the Hackensack Police Department has so many vehicles that never get moved and stored in so many different places throughout the parking lot? They take up two and a half rows in that municipal lot in the back of this building. And they take parking across the street in that other little lot. If the cars are needed, I'm with you. But there's a lot of vehicles back there for this size, I think, police department.
Right.
And the only other thing, and congratulations on winning, and Mr. Sims, I hope you can sleep now for this four years because you could sleep for the last three years.
Go ahead, Ted.
Mr. Coley, in regards to the vehicles for the police department, these vehicles are used for 11-hour shifts for patrol purposes. When I was the chief of police, I put hour meters in them. When you take a police car, it doesn't matter what brand, we put hour meters in them. 100,000 miles on a police car is 300,000 miles because of the idle time. So the basic premise is you drive a car for the 11 or 12-hour shift, you rest the car for 12 hours, and then you do it. So when you have eight, nine, 10 officers on a shift, now you're driving those 10 vehicles, now you're resting 10 vehicles. So there is an added, the other problem is, is that when police cars break down, it's not like we can go to rent a car or something to get a police car and say, oh, okay, we're good. Because we have to maintain the standards because it has to be safe, it has to have all the equipment in it. So there is, and I've had this comment and criticism when I was the chief of police and also as an administrator, why we have so many cars? Well, there's a reason for this. Obviously, I have now, since my tenure, created a complete list of all the vehicles. Obviously, we need to look at a replacement schedule, and we're gonna refine the schedule that we have to make sure that, one, we're not having extra cars that sit with no use. Another premise that comes up that people don't seem to understand, I refer to vehicles that exceed 105,000 miles. That once you get past that, it's not recommended to use those for active response for police cars. But what most municipalities do, and the city of Hackensack also follows this procedure, is that we use these cars for road jobs or for just transportation to schools. Because why take a brand-new police car, run the alternator, run that car, park it out there, and God forbid, somebody plows into the back of it? So we have basically three groups of patrol cars. We have active use, cars that we're kind of pastoring out because they run usually in a municipality on a three-year cycle. In the municipality where I was the chief of police, that town is 46 square miles. So putting 100 miles on a police car in a shift was absolutely a daily occurrence. So we put much more mileage on cars than the city of Hackensack would ever. The, one of the former police cars that's assigned to the city manager use is probably almost 10 years old, has 64,000 miles. We would have whipped that car into shape in three years and been done with it because of just the mileage. So there's a purpose for this. But we are gonna refine the process, we are gonna look at it. But that's the reason, sir. And obviously, because they come out of shift, they need to get to their cars if there's calls or they're bringing prisoners in or the response. So that's why the coordination. The vehicles are over on the other side are for the H cops to use, and they are separated, they're a different color because they don't want to completely identify them as active police officers, God forbid. So that's the purpose. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Blanche Stewart, Third Street, Hackensack. I've asked this question, the mayor, the deputy mayor, councilwoman Keeling, sorry about that, babe. And I'm gonna ask it again because it touches me, I mean, it hurts me. The ambulance. And I know you told me your answer. I still don't agree with it. I go to the hospital at least four times a month, a year. And so each time, I get a $200 bill. And I'm told to pay for it and then be reimbursed. Well, $800 a year when you're on a fixed income is a lot. I can't afford to pay for it. So eventually, it goes to collection. I don't see why I can't bring my $200 bill here and let you pay it directly to the hospital. And I'd like you to take that into strong consideration because I've heard that you've gotten certain, this evening, there was money that was paid to the city for certain things that were allocated to another area. Could, actually, the money is already allocated. If I bring my bill here, if I pay my bill and I bring it here, I'm reimbursed for it. But that appears that if you don't bring it here, then you're not gonna pay for it. I can't afford to pay it. So I believe that when I bring it, you should pay it. So, I mean, lately, I've been taking the Uber because I'm afraid to take the cab, I mean, the ambulance. $200 versus $10 is a lot cheaper for me. So please reconsider the situation about the ambulance. I, $800 a year... I, $800 a year is too much for me on a fixed income.
Could I, I just want to respond to that. Do you have anything else, Candy, for it?
Nope, that was it.
Thanks. Is there a possibility of putting a trust fund, a small trust fund, for the ambulance situation?
The problem so much isn't the trust fund. The problem is that the agreement we have is the city making the payment to the hospital.
Right.
That was the problem with the Medicare.
That's, that's part of the, what they call, that's why the rule, that's why it all had to change, because we were getting stuck in the middle of lawsuit, which was basically an anti-kickback scheme, when they made that original deal with the hospital back in 2008, when they did the cancer center. That was being challenged in the courts, not just here, but other places, as a kickback scheme. And that's why the hospital was moving forward with that. I don't know, we'll have to sit down and brainstorm on that.
Because in past years...
Something, because I understand what you're saying.
Okay, because prior to that, with the EMT, you never got a bill.
I understand what you're saying, and I agree. And if we can come up to some type of solution, we will.
You know, maybe we could look into, we can't pay the hospital directly, but maybe if we could, if you presented the bill, if we could keep track of this, well, we could pay you and you could pay the bill. The problem is, is the city can't pay the bill.
We can't, we can't pay the hospital directly.
We can't pay the hospital, they can't not send the bill. That's the law.
That's where the law came in.
But perhaps we could look into something, Jim, of some way to manage this, where if you had the bill, if we paid you the money before you had to pay it, that would help, right?
Yeah, it would, but I'd rather it go directly to the hospital. But now I'm understanding. But what I was going to say, when we had the EMTs, and there was a bill for the hospital, who did we pay? Who paid it?
Well, back then...
Exactly. Who paid it? Somebody paid.
Well, the insurance company, they only took the insurance money back then. The volunteers, I believe.
Okay, so now...
That's all they ever took. Because there was nothing else.
There's got to be something worked out where, I can't spend $800 a year.
Yeah, but I think what I'm suggesting, if we can do it, I understand, maybe that would help you, you would never have to pay the $200 out of your pocket, if we could give you the money before you paid it. So, then you could take that money and just pay it, right? Then you would never have to take anything out of your pocket, correct?
Okay, I just...
Let's work on it, Candy. I understand it's a problem. Let's work on it.
If it's okay with the mayor and council, if you just write your information, when I can reach out to contact. I've had several complaints, support from council members, and also residents that have come in who've made this complaint. Candidly, I had no knowledge of this prior to my serve.
Okay.
You need to sit down and figure this out. One of the suggestions that the deputy mayor offers is that, once you receive the bill, by providing proof of residency for the city, maybe there is a way to do a remittance to you first, and then you just mail in the check, because as they explain, under this establishment, we just can't pay directly. But that's not a question of trying to sidestep the issue, we're just trying to find a solution. So, if you supply me your information, I will contact you, I will follow up with the may, this may take, because this isn't one of these, this is going to get solved in 30-day situation, because I have a sneaking suspicion this occurred for a while, but I will give this my best effort. And I will get to a solution.
Yeah, I think we could work, I think we could work on it.
He was talking between his two minutes, but that's okay, I appreciate the answer. You tried to explain that to me before, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Constrino. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Geddes.
Aye.
Mayor LeBros.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Pataglia, would you like to speak?
Mr. Pataglia. Well, in 19, first of all, I want to thank all the people that support us. We won the election. Sometimes you're just losers, but it's what it is. In 1995, I was invited to the recreation board. And together with Kathy Salvo, we used to go around the different towns, taking pictures and complain to the city council the conditions of our parts. Right, Kathy? Okay. And we sat down many times with the city council, and we asked to change the, whatever equipment we got in the parts to make it safe. But out of maybe 300 complaints, they maybe took care only one or two. In the end, what happened was that, because we used to complain a lot, Kathy got fired from the recreation board. And we don't get paid, because we used to yes, ask for something that we think it was necessary for the safety of the kids. Agree that you got fired? Okay, that happened. So, after that, I got in an argument with the mayor, and I resigned. So, I don't want to be part of that. Eventually, in 2000, I decided to run for office, just to try to improve the city, right? And election time, together with Debbie Killens, we used to go and put signs, 500 signs and posts and this. By the next day, there were no signs. Who took the sign? Police officers, okay? People from the fire department used to put flyers underneath the condos or the high-rises, "We're not allowed to go in." So, that's the type of campaigns that there used to be in 2000. Police officers coming to the voting places, intimidating the people, right? Send the police officer to remove signs, including in the lungs of the houses. So, when we talk about intimidation, bullet, that used to be there. We don't have that anymore. But what happened with my wife? My wife got what they called the 21% raise, right? The moment that I got in politics in 2000 was no promotion, no raise, and no nothing, okay? The city manager decide to do justice, and that's when she got the raise and the promotion. They eventually were denied by the state, because you know that, where you don't belong to the club, you don't going to get the promotion, you don't going to get the job. And that happened to her. Maybe after the investigation went through, because she was accused, that she was looking to license plate for people in the fire department, the state investigated, the city investigated, they don't find anything. And look like the only solution is maybe she has to sue the city too, to clean the name and to go about the facts. That may be the only thing I have to do, just to clear the whole air. Related to the permits on the soccer field. Tomorrow, you can have a meeting, you can call Mr. Leosse. I got the permit to use half a field, right? And I use that half a field for the kids and the teen and the high school kids. Sometimes, they be sitting there, sometimes even he called the kids to come to practice. So, we use half a field. The field, the grass field, that they were claiming, "Oh, it's a beautiful field, why there is, you're going to do this, why there is, you're going to do that?" They got the lies, we got the lie for the recreation department, they got the field. How many kids do you think that were there last week? 10. So, they tried to use only the third field, they don't want to use the grass field. As I say, that the grass field is not good, right? And they arguing with me, because I want to do the dome, and the way they can have a full year or use the field, right? So, how come now, when I am using half a field, they don't use the grass field? Now, the business and the recreation is like, they are charging so much money to train the kids, something that I did for free, okay? So, now, it's no question that not all the kids are from Hackensack, because we started the team, but now, because we split, and the other group stay with the person that got a lot of money, I can, in a way that I can compete with him, so we got less kids from Hackensack. But I started the team with this kid, with five-year-olds, now they are 17, and I'm going to finish with that group. And nothing like I am doing behind the table or using my power. We got the permits to use it. They amended the permit, and I'm going to prove to you tomorrow when I'm going to bring the permits. Mr. Leosse made a mistake. He amended permits, and he never said anything to me. And that's the reason, instead of arguing with the coach, I just called the police. And then I complimented, I said, "Look, no arguments, I'm going to use only one-third of the field, and that's the way I practice." So, tomorrow, we're going to have the meeting, and we're going to clear the air. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Leo. I'd also like to, excuse me, thank all the voters. You know, I agree, I wish we had better voter turnout in the city. Your vote is a very, very powerful thing. It's your voice into the city, into the city government. I was happy to see that at least we had maybe about 500 more voters than we had in the prior election, but that certainly is not enough. And I think we need to keep spreading the word, educating folks, and having everyone know how important it is to come out and vote in your municipal election. It's probably one of the very most important elections, because here, city government, we're the folks that respond to your everyday needs. We're the folks that you call when you have a problem, or your garbage isn't being picked up, or your street's not being cleaned. So, it's very important that you have faith in the folks that are governing your city. Of course, I'd like to put a special thanks to all of our supporters that came out and voted for the LeBros team as ticket, and we are very happy to see reinforcement that they feel the city is moving in the right direction, as do we. I also want to acknowledge the other tickets. They had a hard campaign, and they fought hard for their right to be part of the city. It's time for the city to come together. We really need to say, here's where we are, we're here for another four years, let's work together. If we truly mean and truly asking folks to believe that we were here when we were running for office for all the right reasons, then let's do it. We have boards, we're always looking for good people. Let's shake hands, go across the lines, and say, "Let's get involved." Find things that are important to you, and see if we can, we can work together to accomplish a lot of these things. And I hope I see some of that. I hope when we advertise for board members, and things are on the website right now, I know we need, have a few boards that we could certainly use some extra folks, especially good folks, good people who want to do the right thing for the city. So, again, extending a hand across the aisle, and I'd be thrilled to see things like that happen. Budget, thank you, Jim. Again, he gave his budget presentation when it was introduced a month or so ago. I think the city did a fine job in preparing the budget. As he said, only a 1.67% increase. And that includes, this was the last of the $10 million bonds for the tax appeals, this is the last one, so we don't have to be hearing about applying for them every year like we have for the past three years. If we didn't have that, if we didn't have to add that last $10 million bond this year, we would have actually had a tax reduction. These taxes would have been on the city's side. A couple of things I think are worth mentioning, some of the cost measures that we really were able to accomplish this year are departmental expenses. Everyone knows prices go up, you know, you got to buy a Rema paper this year compared to last year, everything goes up. We actually saw our departmental expenditures down $300,000 this year. And insurance, everyone knows the problems of rising cost of insurance. We actually saw an $800,000 reduction this year in the city's insurance benefits. And I think approximately $500,000 of that was health insurance alone. So, again, this is working well with our providers, coming up with new and innovative ways to cut those expenditures. We reappointed our healthcare provider again, they did some great things with pharmacy, where we were able to get some pharmacy discounts, no impact at all to our employees, but a way that the city had a return on some of that. So, we've been taking advantage of a lot of new initiatives, and I think you can see with the budget that it really, really paid off. Another thing on the agenda tonight is the demolition of 142, 148 Main. For those of you that don't know what that is, during the election, there was lots of talk about the hole on Main and Mercer. Well, the building next to that hole on Main and Mercer was the building that cracked, which is what held up the construction there. We're now moving and working very well with the owner of that property, and moving forward to have that building demolished, which will not only enable the Main and Mercer corner to resume its development, those folks that owned 142, 148 also took great pride in that building, and it was a family business. So, they are looking to work with the city to redevelop that, redevelop that piece of property as well. So, that's, that's great news for the city. Another thing on my list, we all heard the sad news yesterday of what happened in Carlstadt with the plane crash. We all know that not only our city, but cities in the surrounding towns of Teterboro have been dealing with issues in Teterboro for quite some time now. And I think you heard us speak before about attending the last meeting at Teterboro, and a number of residents joined us there. Because we were very upset that the alternate flight plan that had been promised to us for so long was being abandoned with, really with no explanation. What came out of that meeting was, after hearing our residents speak, after myself, I presented for the city, the FAA agreed to have a special meeting for Hackensack. Right now, we have a tentative date of June 29th. Again, could be subject to change, but that's the date that they are somewhat committed to. And we're going to have it here in Hackensack, in Chamber. I'm going to continue to remind you, we're going to publicize it. I want to pack this room, because this is very important to us. The planes that fly so low over our areas, making its descent into Teterboro, we don't, I mean, fortunately, I mean, of course, all our sympathies are with the families of the two folks that lost their lives. It could have been 100 times worse. And think about if it had happened in one of our densely populated neighborhoods. So, we're going to be talking about this a lot, and we're going to be asking for your support. We need to have a good show. We need to have a lot of folks here. We're collecting pictures. You know, everyone has a phone, you can click a picture, right? If you see it, you happen to see some planes coming in low, close to buildings, anything that looks not great to you, click and send it into the city manager. You know, pictures say a thousand words. When we have this meeting, I want to be able to display a number of these pictures, so folks can see the impact that it's having on our quality of life here in Hackensack. Mr. Orin, to address just a couple of your comments, you're absolutely right, the buck stops here. We assume full responsibility for what's happening in the city, because that's our job. We also do take full responsibility for some of the positive things that are happening in the city. And yes, we've played an integral part in having our downtown redeveloped. That hadn't happened in 25 years, and it's happening now, because you have a working council and a building department that's come together, city manager, Albert from Economic Development, that's working with the development community as true partners to see our city grow in the way it should. So, yes, we are taking credit for that. And yes, we do take responsibility for things that don't go well. But that's life. You know, sometimes you have things, you can go along and things can be running very smoothly, and you hit a bump in the road. We've never hit those bumps in the road from the residents, we've been fully accountable to them, and we've recovered. Because we're more about the solution end than the problem end. And when folks come here, that's what we're about as well. You come here, the reason for you to come here is to talk about your problems, and to also try and present solutions, because you know your neighborhood's far better than we do. And if you know the problem, you probably have a pretty good idea on what the solution is as well. Never meant to insult anyone and call anyone silly. I personally did use the term "silly season," because prior to the election, you see a lot of folks here that you don't see for four years, and their only purpose in coming here is to make it political for themselves.
It doesn't matter when they come.
I'm sorry, it's my turn to talk. During that, during that period, you are going to see a number, or hear a number of issues that really are not relative to the conversation or the intent of these council meetings. Everyone still is given their five minutes of time, regardless of what they choose to speak about. We try and be as respectful as possible, and we ask the same of everyone that comes here to speak with us. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Again, thanks for your support in the last election, and have a great night.
Thank you, Dave.
First, I want to say I'm honored and humbled that the residents of Hackensack had the courage to reelect me along with the broach team for more years. I want to, Kathy Salvo said something about the mayor, complained about the janitors at the high school. I think you're wrong, I don't think he's, he ever said anything like that. Well, no one said anything about being charged by the janitors.
Didn't say that. I said he could get, Jim, they only paid a janitor, right, when you build a building for $6 million.
I want to, soccer, I'm not sure what the young lady's name was, she came months ago, and they complained about the grass field, the grass soccer field. And that grass soccer field, they take a permit out for that field seven days a week, and 90% of the time, that field is empty. 90% of the time, that field is empty. Second thing, we've, in the last two years, we have put lights on that field at $3,000 a month. A month for the soccer program. Mr. Pataglia's soccer field, soccer team, Royals, took out that permit the right way. Mr. Pataglia's soccer field, soccer team, Royals, took out that permit the right way. Now, I don't know how it got changed or amended or whatever, but they had that field first and they deserved it. I wanna thank Kathy Salvo for all your support and Chris with the M and M building. And I promise you, you'll be the first ones to get the tour when it opens up. It's as good as being put up. Lastly, I wanna, I wanna a truce. I'm gonna raise a white flag. Hoping that Board of Ed.
Amen.
And the city council can come together and work it out and let's get this school built. Thank you.
Thank you. Amen. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Oh, boy, okay. I'd like to first extend my congratulations to the member of this council and also to Stephanie Von Rudenborg, I hope I said it right, on their win last Tuesday. I do find it disturbing, like many others, that with 15 people running and hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on the various campaigns, that only approximately 4,100 voters participated. You know, with so much at stake for the city in this year's election, it makes you wonder what it will take to inspire more folks to come out and exercise their right to vote. A right that people have fought and died for. I hope that someday soon, more of our residents will get off the sidelines and participate in our democracy. And if there is anything I can do or say to motivate more people to come out to vote in May, I will do it. That said, I wanna congratulate all those who ran for election and hope that the winning team will continue to do what's best for Hackensack's future. When you sign up to be in the arena of politics, you should know that you will at some point be subject to slights or attacks. That's part of the job description. There is however, an unwritten courtesy, for the most part, that innocent family members be excluded from attacks. Unfortunately, while attempting to smear my reputation, the mayor injected my parents into the pit with a false defamatory statement in the record newspaper stating that they had been helped with a foreclosure by former city manager Anthony Rotino, implying that they received financial help from him. I thought that was a terrible thing to say. My parents have not had a mortgage for over 40 years. But even if it were true, the integrity line was crossed to get at me. It's terrible. My father is deceased. But in my opinion, you owe my 89-year-old mother an apology and a retraction in the paper would even be better. Tonight, I gave a no vote for the M and M bid tonight, tonight. Not because I am against better recreation facility. I am all for better recreation. And although I did originally support the $23 million projects early on, I did so with the information that was given, given to me at the time. Now with more information in hand, I'm just terribly concerned about what lies in store for the taxpayers due to the fact that a new school is badly needed in our town. Members of the audience have been bringing this up for the past few months. Due to the disconnect between the council and the Board of Education and due to this impending major project, I'm just not willing to vote to spend millions of taxpayer dollars knowing that the full picture hasn't been completed between the two teams. Maya Angelou has a saying, when you know better, you do better. But let me repeat, I am not against a new recreation facility, but I do have concerns about its impact on the first ward and I am against spending money without the full impact on taxpayers. The council and the Board of Education may have separate budgets, but it's all coming out of the same taxpayers' account, period. There are no more excuses on either side. The twain must meet. They must reach across, like Kathy said, reach across the aisle and work together to do what's best for the people. For years, there has been complaints about problems with the recreation department. The department is being run based on old policies that must be changed. Everyone, including elected officials, must play by the rules. For years, there have been complaints of constant interference in the running of the recreation program and it needs to stop. There is a superintendent and there are rec leaders who are hired to run the programs. And I am asking the city manager to empower them to be able to do their jobs in a fair and inequitable, inequitable way without fear of retribution or retaliation. Last, looking at the outcome of the election, it's very clear to me and others that Councilman Dave Sims should be the next deputy mayor. This is the second time he came in as the second highest vote getter in a city election. And this time, he came up only 11 votes short of the mayor. I think that is a signal from the people of city that they trust Dave Sims to lead. Every member of the council has their niche or area of interest and there isn't a reason that, 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 that job can't be done without a title. But since there is a title of deputy mayor, Dave should get that title. When it comes time for the council to reorganize on July 1st, the council should pay special attention to the residents who cast their votes and gave Dave the second highest vote total for the second time. He should be the deputy mayor come July 1st. Thank you and good night.
Teterboro Airport, I'll start with that. Major tragedy last night in Carlstadt. What I want everybody to realize, you know, they land planes based on which direction the wind is going. Had the wind been going a different direction, they would have been using the landing pattern coming in through Hackensack. And if you take the distance from that runway to where that crash occurred and measured it from the runway backwards, you'd probably be somewhere in South Hackensack or Hackensack, somewhere's probably in the second ward area. Very, very, very serious accident. My heart goes out to those that lost their lives and their families. But this is a signal to the FAA that they need to do something with air traffic in our areas. This has gotten to the point where, you know, it's, you know, it's like in, even in your own town, you know, you don't need a stop sign until you have that accident and then all of a sudden there's a stop sign there. It's the same type of mentality. Potholes, I just wanted to bring up, we spoke about potholes before. We have a couple of streets that are scheduled to be paved. Smaller streets, but have some harp, I noticed they didn't do the potholes on them. If they're gonna be a while, I would recommend, especially West Lookout, that's a really bad one. And those little side streets going up to Maywood, they're very short blocks, but they didn't, they went on the other streets around there and never filled those, so we probably should hit those. As mentioned before, June 10th is the shred event. Where was the location of that, Ted? Sears parking lot? If you have papers that you need shredded, no matter how much, bring them down there, they'll shred them for you free of charge. He mentioned the twice-a-week garbage pickup starts June 5th. There'll be two notices going out. Zones 1 through 5 is Monday and Thursday, 6 through 10 is Tuesday and Friday. Also, as mentioned before, it was Clerk Week and congratulations to the clerks. Yes, and Councilman Sims has reminded me this Thursday, the 18th, I believe it is, at 8:30 in the morning, Aldi's is having its grand opening. All right, that's a great thing for Hackensack. It was nice of them to come to town. They built a beautiful building. It's gonna be a, a nice addition to our city right there. Poplar is starting, it should be starting to paving very soon. Couple of things I wanted to bring up. Ms. Davis, you brought up the sewers. I couldn't agree with you more, but we have dumped, I don't wanna say dumped, cause in the sewers, we literally have spent, how much would you say? How many million?
How much should we take out of that sewer we cleaned? How many tons?
No, I'm talking about the cost so far.
Four.
But we have been, $4 million since we're in, into separating our sewers to help alleviate with the flooding in different areas. We're in the second phase of that now. We're getting a lot of grant money for that. But that said, there's a long way to go. It's gonna, it's gonna take a while to get this all done. You know, we have the pumping stations, which, you know, you get a, you get a rain like we had that Friday, was it Friday?
Two weeks ago.
Four inches and a high tide on a tidal river. You know, a city that's on a tidal river, we're gonna have some issues. But I get water myself in my basement after years and I know flooding's not a good thing. But we are working on it. It's not like we haven't done anything. But what I wanted to point out to you is, you had mentioned focus on that, not the redevelopment. Well, if we spent that four, if we spent another $12 million on the sewers and had no way to replenish that money like the redevelopment, the taxes in town would go up tremendously. There's no way to counter that if you don't have a plan on how to pay for these infrastructure things. It's a, it's a balance and that's what we're doing. We're bringing in, as was mentioned at the last meeting, by 2023, you're looking at about $15 million in payments from these pilot programs that we can dump back into lowering taxes, fixing the infrastructure, sewers and stuff like that. So that's all part of the master plan. I know when you're, when you're flooding, you don't wanna hear about five years down the road. I understand that, all right? But in order to, it's gonna be a timely process, but we are working on it and we're heading in the right direction. As you see, we spent $4 million already in the last few years just separating the sewers, which is an EPA mandate, by the way. We're only one of three municipalities in this whole county that have combined sewers. So, and the other thing environmentally, it's very important to separate it, cause when the sewers back up, you're, you're seeing sewage, not just stormwater. So, but I just wanted to mention that. Somebody mentioned feeding the seniors tonight, which was ironic, cause we were just talking about getting grant money. Ms. Canestrino looked into some grants that were a program where our seniors are fed. They bring in meals for them, which would be, with our two or three senior housing developments, that would be wonderful. The M and M building, again, it's not just about basketball, wrestling, indoor soccer. Most of the junior programs will be able to use it. So it's not just a basketball court. Yes, Memorial Day, we have, that Monday, will be a memorial park at 10 o'clock? 10, 10 o'clock in the morning. I, I urge everybody to come out. It's a great day and to honor those who gave all for our country. We owe them at least that, if not more. And what else? Schools. Nobody, nobody appears in denial about needing schools. I've been saying it for years. We've talked about needing a school. This Board of Education cannot, probably cannot get a school without the assistance of this council or whatever council is up here. The schools do not have the opportunity to bond. They have to go through their city government to do that and we'd be more than happy to do that if we can only sit down and talk with them about doing it. And we're hoping now, you know, with this election over, that we can mend some fences and, and move forward, because, you know, as I mentioned before, the schools are overcrowded before any redevelopment took place. We went up 700 students in seven years before a building went up. That's a school in itself, all right? And there's solutions out there to this without even having to buy property and take money off the, off the, away from the taxpayers. So we need to sit down and, and work with this Board of Ed and we will pursue that very, very actively. This election was about as tough as you could get. I'll be the first one to admit, it was a negative election, a lot of, mostly, nobody, nobody took it more than me. Nobody took a hit more than me. I had billboards with my name on it against me. You know what? Elections are, you gotta have thick skin, you're gonna get beat up and, you know, we went across all three tickets as far as I'm concerned. Debbie's ticket wasn't as negative, obviously, but there were some negative things out of her camp. There was a flyer about our hole in the ground. Ms. Kelly Gettis knew the situation, why that hole in the ground was there and why we weren't able to do anything about it. The city council has no way of knowing that when a building's being put up and pilings are being driven, that the building next door is going to crack. We don't know that. When the ensuing lawsuit did happen, our hands are tied. We couldn't do anything until it was deemed that that building was uninhabitable. We moved forward with a order of condemnation and with that, it moved the, moved the owner enough to take it down. He's taken it down himself and gonna build something. But I mean, you know, nobody, nobody likes negative elections. I'll be the first one to tell you that. But, you know, again, I'll reinforce, we didn't attack any individual candidates. We just basically said, there's, there's a ticket, we're not. And we stayed with that from day one and that was our, our goal. And that was our plan and that's, that's the plan we stuck with. And you know what? We got elected, so that plan worked.
Can you address my parents?
I'm sorry?
Can you address my parents?
I will address that with that personally, cause I'm not gonna, I don't wanna make it any worse by saying anything up here right now that you might not wanna hear, so.
But it was done publicly.
And there were things done to me publicly. I was called a racist in a paper publicly. Nobody apologized to me.
Yeah, you can smear me, you can smear me, but don't smear my parents.
Mrs. Gettis, you don't wanna go there.
Don't smear my parents.
You call me a racist, you're smearing my whole family. So do you really wanna go there?
Don't smear my parents.
All right, don't smear my wife and my children.
Your wife and your children?
Yes, by calling me a racist in the newspaper, implying that I had racist undertones to what we were doing.
What newspaper was that in?
It was in the Bergen Record. But I'm not, I'm gonna drop it with that. Anyway, I wanna thank everybody who voted for us. I appreciate you coming out. It is sad that we only had 4,000 people vote. I think we only had 3,800 people vote at the last election. It was even lower amount of votes. But when you have 20,000 registered voters and 4,000 people come out to vote, there's, there's something wrong. And you can't say all the tickets didn't try to get people out to vote, cause it was just ridiculous amount of literature that went out, all right? Everybody was getting something in their mailbox every other day or two, three, four times a day. So it's not like people don't know about the election, folks. There are signs all over our city saying there's an election. There's billboards saying there's election. There's trucks driving around saying there's election. So what do we have to do to get people out to vote? I don't know what it is. In 2008, when Obama ran, all right, that was a non-municipal election, but that was a presidential election. 15,000 people went out to vote in the city out of 20,000. That's 75%. That's a great turnout. The following year, municipal election, 2009, less than 4,000 people. So, you know, people need to realize the importance of their, their local officials and how important they are to them. And I'd be the first one to tell you, we need to get more people out to vote. I don't know whether moving it to, changing the form of government, moving it to November elections. I don't know what the answer is. I see Mrs. Davis is, but we, we need to get people out. We do debates, we do everything there is. All the tickets, everybody, everybody, that's the one thing all three tickets agree on is get out to vote. We, we want everybody to go. I want 15,000 people to vote, all right? So go ahead, Ms. Davis.
I know this is not your usual format, but I've said it before. We want to get more people out. Number one, we have to stop negativity that goes on in here. People can have a opinion, but people don't wanna come to negativity.
I, I don't disagree with you. I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. And people get turned up on negativity, but you know, it's unfortunately, it's, it's almost like a catch 22. It starts to happen and, you know, unfortunately, it gets out of hand. But I wanna wish everybody a safe trip home and thanks for coming out tonight. Appreciate all your comments. And Ted will deal with all those issues that, poor Ted's gotta drive an hour and a half home now, so. But thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Motion to close.
Second.
Go, go.
Councilman Pataglia?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.